Welcome to today's meeting of the Town Board of Appeals. Today's date is April 17th, 2025. The meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session and asks everyone to leave the room, you have the right to hear everything that's being said, to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chairman if you're unable to see or hear. The board works from a prepared agenda and will be considering tonight's items in the following order. Appeal 2503, Administrative Appeal of Heath and Heather Lovely, and Appeal 2504, Nonconformance Appeal of Perry Makris, or Makris. Hopefully I get that name right, and correct me when you come up. For each case, the proponents will be asked to proceed first and then be available to answer questions from the board. After the proponents have spoken, the opponents may make their presentations and then be questioned by the board. After all opponents have spoken, each side will be given an opportunity for a brief rebuttal. This meeting is being tape-recorded and is very difficult to hear what is being said when multiple people speak at the same time. Please refrain from interrupting other speakers. Questions should be addressed through the chair. We ask that each person offering testimony come forward to the microphone to begin by giving his or her name and address. In each instance, the burden is upon the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the applicable ordinance or ordinances. Applicants for variances must specifically address and prove compliance with each of the four undue hardship criteria. Following a decision on the application of appeal, toward the end of the meeting, the board will prepare a written decision indicating its findings and facts and conclusions of law that will be mailed to the applicant within seven days of the board's vote. The applicant is free to stay during this written decision process, but not as required to, is not required to. If your appeal is granted, you must obtain a building permit from the CEO or additional permits as required. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's decision, you must do so to Superior Court within 45 days. Are there any questions about what I've just read? I believe we start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Second item on the agenda is roll call. So, Mr. Wiseman?
Yep.
Gary Backa?
Not present. Dan Nichols?
Present.
Craig Sterling?
Yes.
Court Barnett?
Here.
Did I miss anybody? Who am I missing? Uh, so noted? Yeah, okay. And then with us this evening is Mr. Dvorak, the code enforcement officer and the town attorney. Feel free to introduce yourself to everybody.
Good evening. Ben McCall, town attorney.
There you go. All right, uh, let's see. Next item is approval of the February 20th, 2025 Board of Appeals minutes.
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Any corrections? All in favor? So, one, two, three, four, and one abstention. The first appeal this evening is the Appeal 25-03 Administrative Appeal. Before we ask the applicant to step to the microphone, I would defer to the attorney to discuss timing of this appeal.
Yep. So, there's one threshold issue that I think the board needs to discuss first before you open, or potentially open for a public hearing. This is typically not an issue, but when reviewing the application, I think the board needs to discuss first whether it has jurisdiction to hear this appeal. The reason for that is, as you probably know, Section 1-4, subsection D of the LUDC requires all administrative appeals to be filed within 30 days of the date of the decision of the code enforcement officer. And I think from the record, you can see that that perhaps was not the case here. So, I think it's appropriate for the board, and I think it's important that the board discuss this issue first, because if the board doesn't have jurisdiction, then it's not appropriate to even open a public hearing to discuss the merits of the application. So, certainly appropriate for you to hear any argument or discussion from the applicant as to why the appeal may be timely, but I think from a legal standpoint, it's important for the board to decide that threshold issue first before moving forward with the merits. And of course, if you find that the appeal is untimely, then the appeal would have to be denied on that basis. So, happy to answer any questions, provide any further commentary on that, but I think as a threshold issue, the board should look at the application, hear any comment that you need from the applicant, and decide whether you do have a timely appeal that you can hear the merits of.
So, I think the first question I would have is, the appeal was applied for on 3/25/25, and the decision that's being appealed, I believe, was made in January. Is that correct? Scott?
I believe so, yes.
So, Scott, are you aware of any reason why there would have been a delay? Was there any delay on the towns part that would have played into that? Is there any discussion or explanation from your perspective?
I, this particular, this particular appeal and all that, I was not associated with. It was my other, the other code officers, so I can't, I don't know any, known of the communications or anything, and when they took place or anything.
Any other questions from the board for Scott or the attorney at this point?
Well, I think we need, I need to see what that date was, not a recollection.
I believe it's in the, do you have that in the paperwork? I'm pretty sure it was late January, but I thought...
It's attachment, I believe, attachment two. Attachment six. Attachment six is the driveway permit that was issued. And on the face of the permit, it says that it was applied for on January 8th of 2025 and was approved, but approved with conditions on January 15th, 2025. Again, that's attachment six in your packet.
So, at this point, so those are the dates we're talking about. Is January 15th, great day, by the way, my birthday, and 3/25, so clearly more than 30 days. If there are particular questions on that, I would absolutely love to hear from the applicant. Before we open the whole hearing, you can, do you understand the quandary that the board arrives in at this moment?
Yeah. We had no idea there was some 30-day thing.
Okay.
Also, and we had a long time trying to figure out what we're supposed to do about this, since we couldn't put the driveway where we want it, so.
Okay.
I didn't know there was 30 days. That's simply all that is.
Okay. And that's to be understood, since a lot of times, and again, what we've seen mostly is people appeal a denial, so you're very focused on that particular item. So, when you receive an approval, it doesn't maybe necessarily feel like there's as much push, because you've got an approval, you just didn't get the approval that you wanted. Okay, so, um, so any thoughts or discussion from the board on this particular item?
Well, can you restate that? We have no jurisdiction if it isn't within 30 days. Is that what the law says?
Correct. For administrative appeals, the ordinance only provides you a jurisdiction to hear that appeal if the appeal is within 30 days of the decision that's being appealed from.
Can you point us to the correct part of the ordinance where it says that?
Yep, it is, again, it's Section 1-4, which is the Board of Appeals section of the LUDC, and it's subsection D1. It's the first provision under Appeal Procedure. It states that in all cases, a person aggrieved by a decision of the code enforcement officer shall commence his appeal within 30 days after the issuance of a written decision by the code enforcement officer, which is, in the record, January 15th in this case.
May I ask a question to the attorney? Dan Nichols, I'm just curious, is there any flexibility in that, or is that hard and fast?
That's hard and fast. It is, it's a standard requirement for this board. It's also the same with courts. It essentially comes down to, the only way that you have the ability to even consider an appeal is if it's filed in a timely fashion, so it's a hard and fast rule.
Thank you.
Yeah, it doesn't say when they became aware of the issue. It says when the decision, correct, yeah. So, we used to read in contract language, usually we, there's a little wiggle room in there.
I don't know how long it was, but there was a time where I didn't even have the decision in writing, because there was some kind of email snafu with the lady in the office. So, I finally got it, but anyway, like I said, who knew 30 days?
Yeah, understood. I mean, and there's a ton of stuff in the ordinance that, you know, I sit on this board, that's why I ask for references exactly, because nobody has it memorized, and I surely don't expect somebody who doesn't view the ordinance on a regular basis to have it memorized. But unfortunately, the fact that we are a quasi-municipal, quasi-judicial board, there are very stringent standards that we operate by, and the last thing in the world we want to do is be outside of those standards. So, as you can see, we're wrestling with it. As members of this community, we're not dying to send you away without your opportunity to be heard, but there are legal consequences to each decision we make. I guess the only thing I would say, and I know the attorney's going to hate this part, but, and this is an advice, but let's ask a hypothetical. They have a permit that they don't feel fits their need, correct? So, they've been issued a permit, but they have a condition that they feel doesn't fit their need. There's nothing that prevents them from going back to apply for another permit that does fit their need, that we can reasonably assume is going to be denied based on something, and then if that one was denied, they could then come back. I mean, I know you hate when I ask you hypothetical questions, but I'm just, I mean, essentially, trying to get to a point where a decision can be made. Obviously, it won't be made tonight, or it doesn't look like, in my opinion, it would be made tonight. What is your, may I ask the applicant, what is your time constraints that you're working with? I mean...
Trying to get my mom into her home by June 1st.
Right. And...
So, my other question is...
Yes, please.
And this is just educational, I guess. There was no decision, I mean, there's a driveway permit approved, but there was, code enforcement never got involved in this, that I can see. Is that right?
We did. I don't see it in there, but I thought there was a, I thought there was a, an, I'm not sure if there was an email, no, that was another one. My apologies. No, I'm not aware of if an email was sent or not at this time.
So, I guess I'm asking, what are you appealing if you have a permit for a driveway?
Well, if you look at the plan, which is...
If I might interrupt for just a second, before you stop down the road, I think I have a question that is going to be very important. Attorney, the ordinance says decision by the code enforcement officer. Looks to me like the code enforcement officer didn't make this decision. Maybe they were involved in the decision, but this is not a code enforcement decision that I see. This is a public works official, signed below by a public works official, approved. So, who's, do we know whose signature that is, Scott?
I believe that, I believe that's Jeff Grant.
Okay. So, the ordinance is clear that if the code enforcement officer makes a decision, it can't be, it has to be appealed within 30 days.
Mm-hmm.
What do we do now? Because this, the code enforcement officer may have been involved in this decision, but the code enforcement officer isn't the person that signed this, and isn't the public official that's supposed to sign this. This is very clearly designed to be approved or disapproved by a public works official.
It doesn't solve the problem. I think the other thing you have to keep in mind is, going back to the issue of jurisdiction, you only have, this board only has jurisdiction to decide the issues that are explained in the ordinance.
Sure.
And my understanding, if you look at powers and duties, you have powers and duties to decide issues involving decisions of the code enforcement officer, but if no issue of the code enforcement officer was at issue here, then that's a further reason why this board doesn't have jurisdiction to decide it. So, I see where you're going with that, but the, it essentially, it exacerbates the problem. It would not have been, it appears to not have been timely to begin with, but on top of that, this board doesn't have jurisdiction to review decisions made by the public works department.
Public works, all right. So, that's what I'm saying. Absent any evidence that code enforcement was involved in this, I don't, end of story. We don't have any authority here.
We also review planning board decisions from time to time, right?
I believe those, under your ordinance, go directly to Superior Court. You have, you have the authority, and this is Section 1-4, subsection B.
I'm looking at it on court's...
Yep. Administrative, administrative decision, administrative appeals, which are of the code enforcement officer, under certain sections, there are certain decisions of the code officer that are not reviewable by this board. Variances, single-family dwelling setback variances, and that's where the list ends. Yep. So, planning board decisions in Gorham go directly to Superior Court. That's a decision made by the council, but in terms of administrative appeals, you're limited to decisions of the code enforcement officer, and that's, that's a good point. When looking at, when looking at the permit, my assumption was that it had been made by code, but if it, in fact, wasn't made by code, then the timeliness is almost a secondary issue.
Understood. But nothing precludes them from making another application?
Certainly, although I think there, I think there are some underlying ordinance problems. That's not before the board tonight, but it...
Correct.
But yes, I think you have two issues here. One, which has just been pointed out. First is timeliness, second is the decision maker.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, so because the decision was not made by the code enforcement officer, it invalidates any decision?
No, not necessarily. It just deprives this board of jurisdiction to take a look at that decision. So, I agree. Under the ordinance, and we discussed this back in February with the previous appeal, there's a dual, there are two, there are two separate, and Scott can probably explain this better than I can, but both Public Works and Code are, to a certain extent, involved in driveway issues and curb cut issues. But here, the records seem to suggest that the code officer was not involved in the specific decision that is being appealed. So, it doesn't invalidate the issuance of the permit itself, but it does mean that this board doesn't have the ability to take a look under the hood, so to speak, and figure out whether that was the correct decision.
Okay. Thank you.
So, if we, if it's the opinion of the board, or to agree with that opinion in and of itself, do we need to make a motion to, I mean, or is it just simply die on the vine, so to speak?
I think there does need to be a decision. It can happen one of two ways. It can either be, the appeal can either be withdrawn by the applicant based on sort of the discussion that's taken place here, or if that isn't going to happen, I think the board needs to entertain a motion to deny the application based on the jurisdictional or lack of jurisdiction.
I think I know the answer to this question, but would you like to withdraw your application?
No. I want a driveway where I want it.
I understand. Like I said, I wanted to clarify. I was pretty sure I knew that answer. So, with that answer, is there a motion? Or more discussion, or more questions?
I would make the motion that the zoning board of appeals deny, may need some assistance with the language here, deny the applicant's request for appeal.
Based on the fact that it was an untimely appeal?
Right, yeah. Based upon the timeliness of the, of the appeal.
I would also, can I ask for a friendly amendment to the motion, both on the timeliness and the fact that the code enforcement officer did not make the decision?
Okay.
I think should be reflected in the motion.
So, amended?
Amended.
Second? I have a second. Any discussion? I'll add the discussion that I, I'm going to vote for that, but I don't like it. I mean, I understand the legal side of it, but I also, I mean, and I, having talked to these board members many times after many meetings, sometimes we're set to do things that aren't necessarily our favorite thing to do by any means. I don't know what the answer is, and I'm not going to try to give anybody advice, but I'm going to tell you that I'm going to vote because it's the right thing to do legally, but I don't think it's necessarily the right thing to do for two people that live in this town. So, hopefully, there's a solution somewhere in the middle with code or some other way. Any other comments before we vote?
I would, I would just echo that same feeling, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? Unfortunately, your application's been denied.
So, what's the next step for us to get this driveway here?
I would say, I mean, since there's no application in front of me, if I were you, and this is just me, not speaking as a chairman, just speaking as somebody who lives in this town, I'd head right back to the code office and apply for the driveway the way you want it, and if they don't give it to you, then, and I would make sure the code officer signs that decision so that it's appealable, if it's, because as you just heard, a decision by the public works director is not appealable. And...
Oh, so the $250 I paid for that, they'll come back to me then?
Unfortunately, when you read that ordinance, it's going to tell you.
Why wouldn't we, like, emails, like, your attorney here knew what was going to happen here tonight? Why are we even here tonight? This was a waste of our time and a lot of stress.
Agreed.
It's really great to pay taxes here and have this happen.
May I make one other suggestion? There are seven members of this town council. Their cell phone numbers are available, and if you can't find them, call me, find me, I'll give them to you. And those are people that you want to talk to. Those are the people that will, can change an ordinance, and that's, I mean, I'm not telling you that they will, I'm just telling you that those, they are elected officials and should be responsive. The best advice I can give you, and I apologize.
And let it be noted that this for her handicap mother that really can't walk, and it's 100 feet from our driveway to her ADU, or if she parked on the road and walked in, it's about the same distance.
Or if she walked through my house, which has multiple trip hazards to get to it.
What was...
It's not going to work for her not to have this driveway.
What was approved was a driveway going across our front lawn that would cover our water lines and sewer lines.
That's what was approved.
So, it's really not an option. I don't think anybody wants a driveway in their front yard, but, you know, especially for those reasons, when we did have a water main break in the yard, I don't know, a couple years ago. So, you know, we'd have to, I don't, nobody wants to dig, you know, keep repaving, unfortunately, if it did happen again, but I just want to, I know it's in vain and that's going to happen tonight, but just so you know.
No, I think, I think it's good to get that on record, so I appreciate that. Thank you. The second appeal this evening is Appeal 2504, Nonconformance Appeal, and I will definitely take help with that last name, Perry Makris or Makris, property owner, excuse me? Makris, thank you. Property owner and petitioner is seeking nonconformance appeal for map 30, Lot 5, Moser Corner, mixed use. At this time, I would ask the applicant to step to the podium, introduce themselves, and provide some background and information, please.
Okay, good evening. My name is Perry Makris. This is my wife, Heather. We're here with an appeal for a property that we purchased in January of this year. It's 462 Main Street in Gorham. The background here is, there's a number of code violations on this property, which we were aware of when we bought the property. After talking with code enforcement, we learned that one of the units, there's a two-unit building, and then there's a single-family home on the property. In the two-unit building, the second floor of that building was not a permitted unit, so was not recognized as a dwelling unit. The first floor of that two-unit and the single-family home are recognized as dwelling units on the property. So, we have two dwelling units basically on the property with potentially three units. So, our appeal tonight is to take the conversion from conversion, converting the dwelling unit, the single-family dwelling unit, to the second floor of the two-unit building. So, we still end up having two units on the property, and then at that point, actually talking with code enforcement, we can proceed with all the code violations and what's needed to get it up to code. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Questions or complications?
Possibly. Questions from the board? Clarification. Currently, as you purchased it, and maybe it wasn't legal, there were three units.
There are three units, yes, correct.
You want to take one of the legal units and just move that density to the upstairs of, so you'll have one building with two units in it, instead of two buildings with one legal and one illegal, and then a second building that had one legal, so...
Exactly.
I think I understand the question. And is there a decision that was made that was given to you that you could or could not do that, or is it essentially you're here to expand a nonconforming use?
Not that there was a decision, there was a number of conversations with code enforcement, and this seemed like the best path for us to proceed with the second floor, the second unit in the two-unit building.
Thank you. Scott, were you the code enforcement officer involved in this one?
Yes.
Oh, that'll be so much easier. So, may I ask how you see this as well at this point? What is the, what is the hurdle?
Really, well, not that much of a hurdle. Originally, it was discussion was to try to keep three units on that, but we could only justify that there was possibly two units on there. The second unit was, again, an apartment that was not permitted. It did, was created, however, by the previous owner, not by them. I will say that they have been more than, more than working with us on the cleanup, the other issues that are there. And so, as far as moving it over to the other property, I mean, it, this cleans it up, I guess, a little bit more than if we just did it regularly by permits, but it allows for them to have that unit moved over to the other one. It still would be subject to the sprinkler ordinance and stuff like that as well, but it would be a creation of a new unit in that building.
Right. And by density, is it a duplex lot, or is it, or is that, is that the reason it's not conforming? It basically was existing and therefore...
So, I had a little bit of a sordid history in there. There was a application several years ago for three uses on that. One of them was an apartment, and the other ones were commercial uses in nature. It was originally denied under the three uses, but there was a permit for the apartment, and from what we can tell, it looked like that got filed through with, however, the other two uses did not. So, my assumption that I could figure out... So my assumption, that I could figure out anyway, that that, that second unit was permitted, even though, I don't know exactly what the standards were for density at that time, but I don't, it's one of those ones, I think it was permitted, but maybe it shouldn't have been, but it was.
Okay. And is residential use allowed in that zone?
Yes.
Okay. Questions from the board for either Scott or the applicant?
The, the other unit, the single unit's gonna be torn down.
No, it's not gonna be torn down, but there's no electric and no water to it. So water's disconnected, yeah.
We're not gonna do anything with it.
Right, so it's just there at this point, and it's just gonna be left as is.
So you're gonna leave the structure and either use it for something that does conform, or come back for something else later on?
Yes, so once public sewer comes through, then we'll consider it at that point. So it's long-term, not short-term.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. If I heard you correctly in your introduction, you said that the building that you're going to be moving the single-family unit to the second floor, that building will be in complete compliance with all the codes and, and so forth?
Yes, absolutely.
Yep, so you will be bringing that up to standard?
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
So Scott, for my clarification, if, if this use is approved this evening, they'll still have to come back for a building permit and inspections and, and that kind of thing to, to complete their renovation?
I believe, they have a permit now to do the, the one that they, they have legally there. They are renovating that now, but yes, there'd probably be another permit if they're, I'm assuming that they would. We, I, I did not walk through it, the other code officers did, they're, so more than likely, there would be another building permit if they renovated it.
Okay. Other questions? I'm gonna take a second myself to read some of the, reread some of the criteria here, and then if there aren't further questions, I guess I will ask at this time, are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this particular item? Public meeting, public hearing open, public hearing closed? Thank you. So, I think it might be helpful for the board if I just go through and ask the questions for each of the criteria. The first criteria is that the existing use was legally established, was made non-conforming by the adoption or amendment of the Land Use or Development Code, and is not a home occupation. So essentially, it's not a home occupation. I think we just heard from the code officer that it was, there's maybe a little murkiness in the, in the file, but his understanding is that there was already two units on that property.
Right.
Okay. Would you agree with that, Scott? Did I state that correctly?
Yes.
That the proposed use is of the same character and less obnoxious than the current non-conforming use to be changed from, the determination as to whether such a use is of the same character or less obnoxious is to be made by reference to the most restrictive zoning district where the current non-conforming use is permitted in the town. Any use permitted in that zone may be substituted for a non-conforming use as the same or less obnoxious use, so long as the board finds that the conversion meets the other standards thereof. So I mostly read that aloud for the board, but also, do you feel that that standard is met? And why do you feel that standard is met?
There, currently, there's a single-family home with, with two bedrooms. And then if we look at the two-unit building, there's the unit on the first floor. And what we're asking for at this point is to create a, to get a legally permitted dwelling on the second floor, which would be two bedrooms. So the density's the same, the usage is the same, it's residential, no, no change in density, no change in the number of bedrooms or anything like that, so it's...
Thank you.
Same use.
Questions from the board on that one? That the proposed use shall not create a traffic hazard nor increase existing traffic hazard.
Similarly, same density, same usage, so really no change from a traffic standpoint.
Thank you. That the amount of parking required to meet the minimum ordinance requirements for the proposed use shall be existing on the site. Is there plenty of parking on site for two units? Thank you. That the, and Scott, would you concur, plenty of parking?
Yep, there's well-paved area in front of that house.
Thank you. That the amount of noise, odors, vibration, smoke, dust, and air discharges of the proposed use shall be equal or less than the present use.
Similarly, it's, you know, the same usage, same density, no change.
Scott, concur?
Yep, yes.
That the amount of surface water runoff from the site shall not be increased. We're not adding roof or pavement.
No structural changes outside the building.
Thank you. That the hours of operation proposed, you, the hours of operation of the proposed use are compatible with the surrounding land uses.
Again, it's residential usage, no change.
That the proposed use shall not increase the adverse impact on the surrounding properties.
Again, same, same response, dwelling units, no change in density, no change in usage.
Excellent, thank you. Any further question for code, attorney, or applicant? Seeing no questions, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one thing, just for the record? Although I don't see any dissent or problems with this, I think it'd be helpful, just for record-keeping purposes, that you have a separate motion for each of the standards, just to make sure that everybody's in agreement on that, and then a final motion on the entire appeal, either in favor or against.
Of course.
I'll make a motion that the existing use was legally established, was made non-conforming by the adoption or amendment of Land Use or Development Code, and is not a home, is not a home occupation.
I would second that motion.
Thank you, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? You're on the roll.
I'll make a motion that the proposed use is the same of character or less obnoxious than the current non-conforming use to be changed, changed from. The determination as to whether such a use is of the same character or less obnoxious is, is to be made by a reference to the most restrictive zoning district where the current non-conforming use is permitted in the town. Any use permitted in that zone may be substituted for a current non-conforming use as the same or less obnoxious use, so long as the board finds that the conversion meets the other standards thereof.
A second? Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Motion that the proposed use shall not create a traffic hazard nor increase an existing traffic hazard.
I'll second that, there you go. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous again?
I'll make a motion that the amount of parking required to meet the minimum ordinance requirements for the proposed use shall be existing on that site, or on the site.
Second? Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Court, sorry? Court, seconded, yep, sorry, go ahead, Courtney.
I'll make a motion that the amount of noise, odors, vibration, smoke, dust, and/or air discharges of the proposed use shall be equal to or less than the present use.
Second that motion?
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous again?
I move that, this is the shortest ones, the amount of surface water runoff from the site shall not be increased.
I'll second that motion?
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous again?
All right, I'll, I'll motion that the hours of operations of the proposed use are compatible with the surrounding land uses.
Second? Discussion?
I'll second.
Second? All in favor?
Finally?
Unanimous again?
The, that the proposed, I'll make a motion that the proposed use shall not increase the adverse impact on the surrounding properties.
Second? Discussion? All in favor? And then one last motion, all encompassing?
Our motion to grant the application.
Does that cover it?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think it technically does. You could get more wordy if you wanted to.
Worse than me.
Okay, perfect.
I'll second the motion.
By Dan, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is granted, you, would you like to try to draft something for that, or would you rather?
It's already drafted.
Okay, all set, so...
I'm gonna send it to Nina right now.
Okay.
For both of them, but...
So we don't, we've already voted that through, like, so we can adjourn and sign that after, right? Or do we need to sign?
Well, you're gonna, I mean, for the, for the same as had before, you're gonna need to approve your written findings of fact. So I think as of the same, we can have those ready to distribute to you in just a couple of minutes. And then you need, you do need to approve those, it can either happen tonight, or it can happen
No, we might as well.
Seven days from now, but that's up to you.
Nope, I think we should stay right here.
I, okay.
Guys wanna take a break while she grabs that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.